Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January second of two thousand and twenty-four. And we'd like to have on behalf of the supervisors and the county county staff here, elected officials, wish everybody a happy new year. First on our agenda, and well with me today, I'm Swanker, then Flagler, myself, Mike Steinis, all your county supervisors, Lisa Smith, our auditor, Bjorn is IT Director, and Luann is our Executive Assistant. And Mary's also here from the media, welcome everyone. First on our agenda today is Luann.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Years.
Happy New Year. At least we finally got some snow, right? Looked like Christmas.
A little bit.
All right, we're done.
Not gonna hurt my feelings. All right. I'm gonna start with the the business end of things, I guess, let's go back to the calendar. First meeting of the calendar year, our workings we always do is discussion possible action on board chair and vice chair. Those have been running as two-year terms, but you always have the option to change after a year if you choose to do so.
So I guess it's up to the other two supervisors if they.
I'm moving to keep it the same.
I have a motion and a second to keep the chair and the vice chair as is, which is, I believe me, as the chair and Don as the vice chair, is that correct?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Also, first day of your business, designated the official newspapers for the next year, in which we always make sure that they get all of our public notices. I received requests from Macocca Sentinel Press and the Bellevue Herald Leader, and also from the Preston Times. So those requests are in your binder. If you want to approve those as our official newspapers, I didn't get any requests.
And again, I believe that has been the normal papers that we have had for county newspapers, so official.
Second.
Well, it's a second to approve the Preston and the Macocca and the Bellevue papers as our official newspapers for two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
We also need to make our appointment to the Seventh Judicial Department Corrections Board. That's also required in the first of the year. Nin has been serving on that board, so if if that's what you want to continue, I see the motion to that effect.
Do I need to vacate the chair? I will at this point vacate the chair, and I would second that motion. All those in favor, has Nin been the appointment for the Seventh Judicial Board? Oh, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
The next item that I have on the agenda is the discussion possible action on Economic Alliance Board appointments. And after some discussion, they've changed the terms, which were always annual, and they're now two-year terms. So I just talked to Kelly, and in her opinion, we don't need to make any appointments this morning. It'll be next January when we need to renew, reappoint people. So I think we can just skip over that.
So I think that if I can reclaim the chair, correct?
My only question would be that when you made the appointment last year, was it for a one-year term?
Did we know that?
So.
So I'll make a motion that Don stays as our representative for that.
It wouldn't be done.
Well, he he. And also Ryan Kilburg.
Ryan Kilburg, so I'm questioning.
Let's just reappoint each for a little more year, and then we do two years from there on.
So do we know that Ryan Kilburg wants to be reappointed?
He didn't say no.
I guess if he ain't here, then yes, we. So I did not reclaim the chair at that.
I don't know why you gotta step down from the chair, because there's no financial gain on that.
Yeah, I don't, I've been told that I was supposed to vacate the chair if I had to second. So you made the motion to reappoint Don as our representative and Ryan Kilburg as as a citizen.
As super as rep- representative, but not a supervisor.
Okay, and I would second that motion. And I have that motion and a second to approve as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I also included in your packet a list of all the outside boards and commissions that the U S three supervisors serve on.
Are there any new ones?
I didn't.
The only question I got, Ned, is I'd like, I'd like to, at least for mine, I'd like to keep on what I got, just because after the first year, you're kind of just started. But my only question as far as changes, is there any that Jack is stepping off that you would need to, that you've been doing a secondary role that you would be a primary or?
Not that he has told me.
Jack told Lynn that he was gonna stay on the governing board. So he's willing to stay on the governing board.
And yeah, that very well could change this year too, yet.
Right, right.
The whole region thing and the, you know.
So again, they may.
I mean.
I'm okay with my appointments, I mean, I've been doing them, you know, like you, like Don says, you get acquainted and you get to figure how the business is being run and how the committee is being run, and then you kind of know where you're at.
I guess the only one that's not listed on here is that Communication Board, or the Advisory Board, or whatever.
Right, we're still, I think, trying to figure out exactly where that's at, so I didn't include it on this list at this time.
I'll make, we'll keep the list as as is.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, and I did reclaim the chair, correct? I got a motion and a second to appoint a supervisory committee as presented and board assignments. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay. Also, there are going to be a couple of vacancies that we will have to fill. So I'm looking for permission from you to publicize those vacancies and look for candidates to fill those positions.
And did we get notice of?
There's one on conservation. There's two on eminent domain. I'm not entirely sure about the rest of them at this point, but I knew we had at least those two, and I usually publish it. When I figured out the vacancies, I put them in one ad to go in the paper, it covers.
And we will get notice of that when you send that or before you send it?
I will let you know, yes.
I'd like to see who wants vacant, yeah, so. Either solicitor, talk to people who may be interested in in serving. Again, we hope that people step forward and do serve on some of these commissions, I know the pay is good, but they appreciate their help and their input from the county, so.
So.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the publishing for board and commission vacancies. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
All right, as for the calendar this week, tomorrow, Wednesday, January third, at four thirty P M is tentatively a Wednesdays Aren't Possible meeting, I haven't really got confirmation on that yet. For any of you that want to go, I think Nin has been going to that. But tomorrow night at six P M is an E nine-one-one Service Board Meeting for Mike and for Nin. So it should be packets in your in your binders. Monday, January eighth, at seven thirty A M is an early childhood Iowa Executive Committee Meeting on Zoom, by Zoom for Nin, let's pretend that. Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, January ninth, at nine A M. And that afternoon at four o'clock will be a Macoca River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee Meeting by Zoom for Don. And that night at six o'clock will be a Conference Board Meeting for all of you. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Appreciate that. And next on our agenda would be Mr. Jayden Chekel, our Assistant County Engineer. Good morning, Jayden.
Good morning. Uh, so first on the agenda is action on water grader position in our Lamont shop, so enjoy your guys' memory, a bit back in October, our Lamont Grader at that time resigned for reasons, you know, he wanted to try farming this and that and that, but so he resigned, and that left the opening. Went through the internal process, ended up being public, so we posted it, and I think Todd updated you guys at that, during that time, that the applicants, there was one that had significant experience, and we talked it over with our road superintendent about, okay, he can't reach out to him, if he starts this date, when he can start, would we be able to accommodate anything that would come up like snow removal until that time? And the roads are pretending, yeah, we could work it out, whatever, so. So the applicant was is Jamie Dunn, and he comes from Dunn Construction, where he's got his lifelong construction experience, including grader experience, so. Uh, that's who we're looking for, or that's who we are appointing to, the Lamont Shop Grader effective January eighth, pending your guys' approval.
Okay, so I guess with the juggling that has gone on prior, I mean, is this, so if he don't start till the eighth, is he aware of the other position that would be opened up then? And does he have the opportunity to take that position?
Yes, so that position closes internally at the end of the day, next Monday, and there's.
Same day.
Same day. So, I mean, he would be employee at that time, so there'd be, he would have, just like the rest of them, you know, could
Sure.
sign to that grader position out of that shop if he so chooses to, and if.
So.
Bellevue.
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 So if I'm correct, I mean, can you kind of lead us through the process of where the transformation has happened, why? Or is that confidential yet?
How that, how the Bellevue one?
Yeah.
Is open?
Yeah.
I could explain it more detail at a later day, because it's a long.
Yeah.
It all started with Rogers Retirement is where that
Sure.
all originated from, and everything's trickled down since then.
And then things kind of start moving around, yeah, I didn't know if that was all confidential, you had to be at our page, or being the opening is still out there.
Yeah, I mean.
So we don't have a grace period that.
Not that I'm aware of. Where like he would, you have to stay in the shop for, say, one month or something until you
Right.
I don't think so, I'd have to look at.
That's kind of a crappy situation that, first off, that area hasn't had somebody for this long, because we did wait. And then you're gonna say that he can be here less than eight hours and move to a different.
And that would trigger the re-advertising of the water job.
So, yeah.
So you didn't have a vacancy at Lamont or Bellevue?
Yeah, if you were to sign the Bellevue shop, we would go internal again for Lamont, which, assuming, still gonna yield nobody, and that would go to the public. So, yes, there's a possibility that, possibility that this could be open.
There's a possibility somebody else wants Bellevue.
Just through talk, I'm gonna guess.
I mean, internally wise.
Internally, yeah.
We don't know, but we are.
Assuming you meant internally.
I I guess my only point is, is that we're following the procedure like we normally would, I mean, so he has, if he starts that day, I was assuming he was starting this week, but no.
No, it is the eighth.
Okay, so I I guess as long as the process or procedure is followed for everyone is the same, that he has, if he does have that opportunity, if he don't, then he don't, that's all, that's all I was asking, but yeah.
I can have Todd, I think Todd's in the alarm, we can have him look into the contract, I mean, I guess, I mean, yeah.
I make a motion to approve said individual to the Lamont Shop.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve Mr. James Dunn to demoted greater position in the Lamont Shop as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Last is an entrance permit out of Macocca Township, section thirty-two, uh, five hundred plus site distance, I'm coming from the east and west, it's on Thirteenth Street, uh, just south of town here, one that we reclaimed this year, somebody just looking to build a house on a property, so getting the, doing appropriate steps. Eighteen-inch caliber required, that's all been checked, good, so no issues with site distance, so recommend approving entrance permit for Jeff Wills, sorry to forget to mention that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry. Motion and a second to approve the interest residential interest permit for Jeff Wills, Jeff Wills as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all I had, unless you guys had any questions.
Um. Again, we talked briefly this morning about, you know, some of our, we approved the brush tree clearing contract, a little bitter, and I assume that he wanted to start, and we approved the payment schedule like we agreed to. I have had some calls regarding right-of-way trees, fence lines, da-da-da, so hopefully we can iron that all out, but.
Yes, and we've gotten some calls here in the office, actually, before I came in here too, there was one about it, so I'm gonna talk to Todd tomorrow about it, but.
Well, yeah, just so we get that kind of cleared up here before everything goes on, so as I perceive it, is we are only clearing in the right-of-way.
Are you guys gonna go out on the one-eighth where the right-of-way line is?
Yep, and they're actually doing that right now, and for the purpose of, well, we put the plans that we would take it to so the contractor knows where to go. And second part of that is, it helps us to identify if there's any fences that are in the right-of-way, where, okay, we haven't staked, we're staking everywhere along the right-of-way, so we can identify those fences, which will have to involve work with those property owners too, to remove the fences as necessary, so another hurdle we'll have to go through, but, yes, they are staking the right-of-way, and we are only clearing within the right-of-way.
So with that being said, a lot of times over the years, and I've run into this many times on real estate properties, that over the years, when roads change and designs somewhat change, right-of-ways sometimes can be, the normal right-of-way is thirty-three feet from center of road, correct? For the most part, or for most roads, the standard. But that can be changed, so it could be a hundred feet. If the corner was taken out, you're still on the right-of-way, and it wasn't, the process of giving it back to the landowner or anything like that, so the right-of-way could extend further than thirty-three feet.
Yes, and on our roads, for example, well, E seventeen from thirtieth to Canton, that has a wider right-of-way, because that's a paved route, and for the grading at that, I don't know how long ago, but you know, that had wider right-of-way for grading and paving at that time. Uh, the three-eighty-ninth and what's it, four-seventy-fifth, they would all be your standard thirty-three foot from center, so sixty-six foot total. Mill Creek, on the other hand, does have a wider right-of-way than your typical sixty-six foot, because at one point it was planned to grade all the way through, so it does have wider right-of-way than the sixty-six foot, but that road, we are only going thirty, we are treating it as a sixty-six foot width, simply because, given the terrain that it's on, as well as well, seven miles, roughly seven miles long that we're clearing, well, if you were to add, say, an extra fifteen foot on one side or two sides, say thirty foot on each side, uh, that adds up to quite a bit of acreage, which obviously increased costs, so we just treated it as a thirty-three foot from center.
It was a three-eighty-nine to one, it's got kind of like a bluff on.
Yeah.
There's like a tree right down.
Do you know where the contractor is starting?
He isn't sure, it sounded like he'd like, it's sounding at this time, he would start most likely on three-eighty-nine, of just north of Saint Antonatus.
Almost at the county line there.
Correct. And his sched, he's still completing other projects elsewhere, so he's had a rough timeframe, but the earliest he would start would be early February at the earliest, because he's, depends on how he finishes up his other jobs, but it's kind of where we're at right now with talking to him, and two, about two weeks prior to when he wants to start, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with him, just to kind of go through all this stuff.
I did get contacted from an individual, they live on one-sixty-second Street, which is north of one-fiftieth, over there, just north of the Iron Hill, Corian, he took me on a little, I stopped those places talking about one thing, he took me on a little side, drive to the point out, and there's getting to be some pretty good routes on on the one-sixty-second. Um, pretty significant soft spots on there, um, just have them check it out, and if I need to do something.
Yes, I can do that.
So again, if anybody has questions as far as the right-of-way and or trees in the right-of-way, contact your office.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. And not me. No, you're fine with calling any of us, we'll do the best we can as far as.
Saying, I will say, last week, last Tuesday morning, between six-thirty-seven, there was a tree, actual tree, not just a tree branch, but a tree that fell over on Mill Creek, and a vehicle hit it and had significant damage, or enough to blow the vehicle, I guess, so. You know, tree falling, I guess, just to show that this project is works area, and and this isn't the only time that trees have been cleared on Mill Creek or probably any of these roads, for example, but there's been requests in the past to, we need to brush clear, well, three-eighty-ninth this past fall for harvesting equipment, so just want to show that this.
Well, we get them called every year for harvest equipment, and and you know, that that equipment's getting bigger and bigger and whatnot, but, uh, yeah, I mean, there's.
You guys do, you guys do your five-year road plan meeting when, when we do?
It has been set yet, but it's typically in February.
Yeah, I would say, part of the conversation I had, which kind of goes along with this, is, this gentleman was really impressed with cleaning the brush and roads, you know, the the roadways and stuff, but then there was the gripe, well, you're taking my thirty-five-foot road down to twenty-six, twenty-eight feet, and you could address maybe in the in the five-year road plan, why this is happening, you know, when roads being brought up to grade to pave, and then there's not designated to be paved anymore, so then the roadway is narrowed again, and he was bringing up, well, this road was set to pave in the sixties, and I'm like, no, it's not gonna get paved, and we're not gonna redo it, and all that kind of stuff, so. That would just be an idea to touch on, you know, you can't go back sixty years as an idea for a paving project, and, you know, the Hurstville Road always comes up again, and and, uh, or, eighty-fifth Street, um, that was brought up to pave and then narrowed back down, and, and all that kind of stuff, so maybe just touch on that a little bit, the whys and.
Well, we, I guess, we all know that we have been somewhat benign in some of these maintenance issues. And we're, we implement, if the engineer offices implementing programs that, for the benefit of that, I think that's a good thing, and I think it's, well, it's somewhat self-explanatory, but yeah, we can't have roads that are thirty-five feet wide and put uh, three times as much gravel on them, that's just not feasible, so.
Yes, I know, I think, for example, one-fifty-fourth, which is south of intersects on Washington Mills Road under county line, I think that one, from talking with some of our guys, have been here quite a while, and that was actually, they remember working on that before they came to the county, grading that wider and stuff, I don't know if it was for paving, but it was actually graded wider.
I think I know the road you're talking, I drove it one day, just, I just ran it when I was driving the roads, checking, that that one's got me pushing almost forty feet, I mean, it's like, it's.
The same way the whole road over there.
Hmm, yeah, and yet by replating, they are narrowing the road, but not making the road too narrow, just making it to the width, a maintainable respectable width that they need to be, but it is an adjustment for.
That's where you kind of get the complaints, is because, again, they've been so wide and.
Yeah, we, I mean, as far as.
I guess as we start and everyone, the roads, with all the equipment that we're getting, the farmers are using, um, there isn't any aspect of someday determining that roads need to be wider or a limit, I said that might be a better chance the state starts limiting the size of the limit, but, I mean, because it's getting.
I mean, that'd be, I mean, even our paved routes, for example, our county paved routes, our pavement's only twenty-two foot wide on most of them, Iron Bridge, I think, is a little bit wider, but there's no shoulder, so, you know, our paved routes really, for the most part, aren't any different than the gravel routes, it's just paved routes, they may have, they're staying in their lane, they may have somewhat of a shoulder to drive on, but for as big as it's getting, that's still, still may approach.
That shoulder ain't a guarantee it's gonna hold that equipment.
Yeah, so.
Barely.
Yes. Yeah, I think at some point.
They were talking about, I mean, one-fiftieth came up right when we used, take me to show me that gravel road, he was talking about the lack of shoulder, where you you guys just paved, you should have just put about four feet of shoulder, and I'm like, uh, the landowner should have gave up a little bit more ground, because there's required widths that we need to maintain, and right-of-ways. So it's all, but no.
Sure appreciate it, Jayden, and keep us updated, I guess.
Cool.
We'll do, I'll get that back to you. Thank you, happy new year. Are there any visitors or citizens, either online or present, that would like to approach the board? Seeing and hearing none, next on our agenda is Lori Rowling, our Jackson County Zoning Administrator. Good morning, happy new year.
Good morning, happy new year. All right, so how about we just start at the first one, the rules of procedure for the zoning commission? I know this was gonna come before you guys earlier, but we found some issues, even after we had twenty eyes on it, that we had some issues with the public meetings, the way it was worded in here, so that has all been addressed. The zoning commission met on the eighteenth February of December, six, excuse me. When they met at their last meeting on the eighteenth, yes, they asked that this be considered by you guys, they recommended approval.
Yeah, so good with it?
Oh, yeah, any major changes that you want to highlight, or minimal, or?
No, um, and if you remember, I brought this to you guys to let you know, we we had some attendance issues, and we were going to invoke the rules of procedure, but we found out that it had been voted on by the commission, but never approved, and turned into a resolution by the Board of Supervisors. And that goes back to two thousand and seventeen, and that's, I don't know why I dug to make sure it was official, but I did, and I found out it wasn't. Um, so it is now, um, but yeah, we, and the reason we we wanted to make sure we were right is because we've had members that haven't been to meetings, and and this kind of laid out the the recourse.
So do we have a resolution number?
It's resolution one thousand and two. One thousand and two, dash zero, one, dash zero, twenty-four.
I was like, that's a short number from all them other ones. I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
I have a motion to, and a second to approve the rules of procedure for the Jackson County Zoning Commission as presented with the resolution number presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And then the next one up is discussion and possible action on a resolution for utility scale solar moratorium. Um, at your request, the board, um, we have a resolution moratorium here for your approval, that would give us about nine months of a moratorium, so that we can work on getting a utility scale solar ordinance in place. Um, hopefully, we would be working on it. We'd start probably, say, Marches or April, I know my commission right now is is very taxed with the wind, and hopefully we'll have that finalized in February, and when we finish that one up, we'll go into solar, and we're still working on the comprehensive plan.
So I know we're working on the wind, uh, we put a moratorium on the wind, when does that end, does that end the same date, or is that going conjunction?
No, it, um, it was put in place, I believe, May thirty-first, with nine months, so that would be
Okay, so nine months.
February, I believe.
And this one's for nine months, so let's say, somebody has a project, or, you know, as far as solar goes, or contemplating, they can still come to the board and request, correct?
No, sir. This, um, what this does, and I'm gonna just verify, but I know my intent when we did this, is that since there is no ordinance at this time, not allowing them to take out application protects the county from having to do it. From having to do anything, because without an ordinance, they can go willy-nilly.
We still have to approve it, correct? I mean, we still have to approve construction for a zoning permit.
We don't approve the construction, we approve, well, the setbacks and all that, but when you don't have setbacks or regulations, it's hard to.
So when you say, can you define utility scale then somewhat?
It's in the first paragraph, um and I went with the um one megawatt. Which is kind of the minimum for utility scale.
So residential owner could still put solar in?
Yes, sir. And right now, the way we've been handling the residential, um if they're doing ground mounts. We'd have them do, they have to fill out a zoning permit for a ground mount. If they're doing a roof mount, since they're not adding height to a building, um. They don't need a permit for the, for the roof mounts.
So to get a feel for a megawatt, cause I'm just thinking, you know, some private solars could be much larger than others. So get perspective, how many megawatt is our jail project, does anybody know?
Doesn't even tap megawatt.
Yeah, I don't think so. Well, I know, I don't know how to score it solar, I know the, the power plant, the generator, but that's. They can max generate sixteen megawatt.
I was just looking for, of, you know, like even the Y, how, how big is the Ys?
That I don't know, I, you could have asked me these before, I would have been more than happy to look into that.
No, I just don't want to restrict, you know, a large, i- if it's a, the private individual and then everything is in perspective per se. Um and he's got a, if, I, I don't know, well, how big is one megawatt if he's running a hog barn or a chicken barn or something?
I, I did look all this up and just try to get a feel for. Um the definition of a utility scale was. It, it kind of flip-flopped, um some said one megawatt, some were saying five. Um but I went with the most restrictive for us to protect us. Um because what it did is it also broke down by acres, how many, I forget how many acres it would take. Of ground to produce one megawatt, but it's bigger than the Y, because it would take acres.
You mean for the, the, the project itself?
Right. Um if, if you guys.
Trying to gather, you know, I, I know how big this one is sitting down here, and I know how big the Ys is when I drive by and look at it, you know, is that? Half the size of what we're talking or is that?
Would you like to table this right now and get me back in before you adjourn? And I can do a little bit of research, okay?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. I mean, just thought, you know, I don't want to restrict somebody that's having a, you know, they got a farm operation, they're thinking about it.
Yeah, for, for themselves, though, not to be put out on the.
Right, on the grid.
It's just kind of Googling quickly.
Sure.
Depending on the specification technologies, utility scale solar power may require between five to ten acres. I put in to generate one mil. Megawatt.
Okay, so that, that's kind of where I was thinking, but I wasn't, knew, cause I knew it took acres of ground and. Obviously, the, that Y doesn't have acres of ground.
I, I guess it's up to my fellow supervisors too, if they want more information here or.
Yeah, and that's.
If you're ready for take action or what, what your thoughts are. I, I just feel that the moratorium faults everything, you know, I, I just feel like when they come. If they have requests, we can still say, we need more information, or can tables, or can.
Yeah.
It's hard to stop somebody though, if we don't have any guidelines to stop them on.
Well, and, and that's where.
This would give us time to get the guidelines.
It gives us time, and I always like using Iowa County as an example, they don't have zoning. They had wind energy come in there and just take over with, cause they did not have any ordinance or anything to stop them. So this would, this would just, it doesn't stop them, it just temporarily puts a stall on anything from happening.
With that being said. If we do six months, and then at the end of the six months, we can extend it again. I feel better with six months than I do nine, nine puts us into September.
Right, and you know, I don't know if there's.
No, I don't, not at all, I have no interest in it, I just, I have, I, restrictions bo, a lot of times restrictions bother me, you know. We're, we're putting too many restrictions and too many laws and, and I, I guess it's for the betterment of the public. But still, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, it's my land and it's mine.
Right.
You know, I bought it, paid for it, I'm paying taxes on it, I improved it, now I'm paying more taxes on it, you know, so.
Um yeah, it, it's whatever you guys are comfortable with, and if we, cause I just don't see us getting it knocked out in. Nine months, I just felt was a nice cushion, just knowing what our commission has going on.
And I don't know that, I'm not saying that we'll have it knocked out in six months, but then we have a better idea. Is it gonna take another six months, is it, can we have it done in three, so, that's, that's all. That's just my opinion, everybody else can have their own opinion.
Yep, but if you guys want to adjust that, um we could still get that changed and they could approve it with those changes, right?
Yeah, if you tell Shelley right away, she'll change the resolution, it's not printed on reservation paper yet, so yes, it can be done.
The wishes of the board or any other uh comments?
All been a week or so, that's, I guess, okay, but um I do believe, I was kind of wrestling with the nine-one thing, does that give you, I mean. It's kind of an odd versus a calendar year.
I know, and I guess that's where we went with um.
I don't even know why we did it for this, this, the wind stuff either.
Oh, I think I know why we did it with wind, cause we wanted a number and we knew we were gonna start working on the comprehensive plan. And we were gonna see where, you know, that kind of took us, if it had anything definite that we needed to hone in on, which it really hasn't. But I think that was probably our, our reasoning for that. And now working on that, um wind plan, well, in conjunction with the other things, but it's um. The nine months kind of also gives me. Um a little bit of reality on how long things actually take to get done. Not saying that we couldn't have it done in six months, it, it is possible, but I do know that we probably wouldn't start. The commission probably wouldn't lay eyes on it until March, just with the, the meetings that we have. What their other, other projects they're working on.
I, I, I guess, again, in what, if we do the six months, we can certainly extend it in six months again.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not that somebody's gonna come tomorrow and apply or ask about it, but they could come in March. And, and not be able to do anything for six months after that, because that's still, you know, six months from March, so. We can certainly very quickly extend it in a new resolution.
Yeah, cause the way this is written, it is um on issuing, um the moratorium does put a halt on issuing. Application or permits relating to such development.
Again, my opinion, up to you guys.
Okay.
My only thing is, she doesn't think it's gonna get done in six months, then.
You can always, sometimes I surprise myself, but um, um but I've been trying to be a realist. I'm trying to be a realist, you guys.
We don't want to tax our board either, and.
The commission is, it's been green, I mean, the stuff that we have them doing right now.
Right.
And there is a chance that um just some emails that we've had today, they may not be meeting in January, cause it falls on caucus night. And we're not convinced we're gonna have a quorum. And we just found that out after notices were sent out to the paper.
I guess I'm okay with the nine months, cause I think that's more realistic, that we would get something done.
And if we get it done sooner.
We can always short.
I believe.
We can rescind that resolution.
Can they, can we send that current?
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that we go with the resolution as presented to us today.
Second.
And that is resolution one thousand and three dash zero one dash zero two dash twenty twenty-four.
I'm motion second to approve resolution one zero zero three dash zero one dash zero two dash twenty twenty-four as presented, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, the final one here is a resolution for our moratorium on utility scale. Battery energy storage systems. And again, the recommendation has been nine months. Of not issuing applications.
Motion second to approve the resolution number one zero zero four. That's zero one dash zero two dash twenty twenty-four on the battery storage facility moratorium. All those in favor say aye, aye opposed, motion carried, they did read in the paper that they had a. One that exploded and cut fire on an airplane the other day.
That was in Tokyo, is that the one that?
Remember where it was at, but they got landed, they confined it to that storage area where they were hauling them, but it was.
Oh, what, like lithium batteries? Okay, okay, that's a little different than this, but. Um cause this is like those big facilities that store the energy, say, kind of from your wind and solar, waiting to be spread out on the grid. But yeah, those lithium, they even say people like with their laptops and phones and stuff on airplanes are, can be issues. So, anything else for me to focus on, are you guys all good?
No, we're good, just keep plugging away, don't get one too tight and.
My.
We'll get her.
Me.
We'll get her.
Get one too tight.
Yeah, thanks Lori.
Thank you, guys.
Lisa?
Good morning, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December twenty-six, twenty twenty-three board proceedings as written by auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers, so loved.
Motion second to approve the minutes from December twenty-six, twenty twenty-three board proceeding. As written by Audrey Smith and publication in the official newspapers, all the favors say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing. In the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Motion second to approve the claims in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. Are there any boards or commission reports? Anybody would like to share, don't think we had any since last week, did we? I had a. Want to still call it hometown pride, but it's better Bellevue Betterment or something now, whatever it is, but we had a very slim crowd, um. Had some history, interesting comments that come up, but no, yet to be seen, so yeah, there's work in progress on several different things, whether it be. Uh daycare or, you know, the school in Bellevue and whatnot, but uh interesting. So not really there, anything else that I have, they do have a nine-one-one. Anything else before the board? Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, aye, happy new year, everyone, most, meeting adjourned.